Now? Okay, now it's... Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Let's settle down here. The City of Bridgeport Planning and Zoning Commission will come to order. It is Monday, September 29th. It is 6:20 PM. The first order of business tonight is to introduce the members seated. To my far right is Avery Williams, Ali Akbar, Saladad Nunes, Cesar Godero, myself, Chairman Mel Riley. To my left is Bob Morton, Vice Chair, and will be acting as Secretary tonight. All right, can we do the fir... It's not supposed to go green. Oh, there it is. Okay.
Okay, the first order of business is 21-25-22-3674, 3700, 3724 Madison Avenue. Petition of 3674 Madison Avenue LLC and 3700 Madison Avenue LLC seeking a zone change approval from the N4 to the NX3 zone to construct a six-unit residential building and to expand the parking area.
So this is their second bite out of the apple, right?
And they're requesting to be deferred.
So that's it, right? They don't come next time, then? All right. Next item, please.
Next, we have 25-28-1525 Railroad Avenue. Petition of Laurentano Sign Group seeking special permit and site plan review approvals to install four wall signs above 25 feet for the self-storage facility in the RX2 zone.
Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Raymond Rizzi. I'm happy to be before you tonight with regard to this application. This application is for four wall signs for which, if there's buildings in excess of five stories or more, this commission has the right to expand the height above 25 feet. This is very unusual. This commission granted, if you recall, this commission granted this application for a self-storage facility over on Railroad Avenue. That's basically the building. This is basically surrounding neighborhood, which I will show you and take you into more detail how that's important and fits with your regulations. So basically, in getting your... In allowing a sign that gets above 25 feet, there are three conditions you have to satisfy. Basically, one, is it in keeping with the scale and massing of the building area which is mounted... On which it's mounted. Actually, there's four. B, is it compatible with the character of the surrounding area and does not conflict with existing structure, signs, or cultural historic resources? C, does not cause glare or any adverse visual impacts on a property in an end zone? And D, does not result in the roaming or trimming of any trees? Now, I'll go to this picture, which I think will start making it easier. First of all, for the surrounding area, if you go up and down 95, as you've seen many of the recent... This is the one right on the Fairfield border. Extra space storage. As you can see, it's above the 25 feet. One of the things that makes this unique, and this site unique, you've got to remember, this site is between the railroad tracks and 95, nothing in between. So a street sign on Railroad Avenue...
Oh, Commerce Drive is...
What's that?
Isn't Commerce Drive in between?
Yeah. I mean, it's... So these are just signs, almost all in the immediate area. You've got the Mongers Market, you have U-Haul storage, you have public storage. All of these are within a stone's throw of this site. So I don't think this is out of character in an industrial zone. It's different if this is in the middle of a neighborhood. And once again, it doesn't look like it's above 25 feet when you realize that it's against the train tracks. And remember, this is one of the highest elevated sections of I-95 on the whole corridor. This is the building as it exists. I just wanted to show you, we don't have to trim any trees. But this is the building going up, and we want to get this sign, this wall-mounted sign. So in showing you this application and taking you to some of the other conditions, one, I think, as you saw, that there's many other self-storage facilities within a stone's throw along this 95 corridor with signs, actually larger than the signs that we're proposing that have been approved along the 95 corridor in excess of 25 feet in height. Keep in mind, one of the requirements was that it does not cause any glare or other adverse visual impacts on any end zone. What I did was we put a map together and showed all the zones. You've got to go pretty far, you've got to go across the tracks, you've got to go across the parks, you've got to go through the mixed-use areas. Before you get to the first end zone, I believe, is probably over... You know, it's got to be almost 1,000 feet away. And it's also a... It's off of Commerce Drive, which frankly, I think in that part, it's almost right on the Fairfield line on the other side of Fairfield Avenue. So that would be across where the Starbucks is, across where the O'Reilly's is, you get back up into that area, which won't even be visible. Keep in mind, you have... This area here is where, you know, you've got your Starbucks. This is where... I'm sorry, this is where the park is, this is where the O'Reilly's parks. Everything else, as you can see, is either industrial, mixed-use, industrial on the other side, so there's no impact on any residential neighborhood. As you saw, the building's compatible, it's compatible with the surrounding areas, there's no cultural historic resources along here, this is all basically heavy industrial, and it does not cause any glare or other adverse impacts, and like I said, no resulting in any tree trimming. I have to show you what I think is important about this, that the client did not overdo this. I think these signs are only, even though they're up 25 feet, they're only two and a half, basically two and a half feet tall, correct? So the letters that you see in this thing are about two and a half feet tall. So this will sit along on four sides. All four sides are industrial zoned or a mixed-use zone, and on either side, you have either the train tracks, the highway, and then actually, everything kind of converges because that's where the train tracks and the highway almost cross over there. So as you remember, Railroad Avenue basically leads you right into Fairfield Avenue. So for all those reasons, we believe this is a... That an approval is required here. This is not... We don't need to show a variance, we just had to satisfy those four requirements. If you could... I think we brought this... This came into play, and we modified the regulation for these specific buildings, for example, like the hospitals, buildings that need some exposure. In the case of these facilities where you're... What's really unique about this area is, I don't know any other section where you're literally sitting between the train tracks, elevated train tracks, elevated highway, your street signage does you nothing. I think it's probably 25 feet just to get to the height of I-95. So you'd have... All you would do is, unless anybody's living under 95, that's about the only person that's going to see your sign. We've had a few of those incidents, but I don't know that they're going to be used in self-storage. So for all those reasons, I think we satisfied what we consider your special permit standards. I think those four issues are the biggest items that you have. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Allison, the sign companies here, if you have any specific questions. The sign will be backlit, and as most of the signs are, along 95. What's interesting is...
Well, I will ask, and I...
It won't even be as high as where you have basically the billboard signs.
It won't be movable, no.
What's that?
It won't be movable, like those signs at 95 that change faces.
No, 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 no.
No, I know, I know, I just wanted to...
No, 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 no.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. No problem, it's only extra space storage. And it's... Remember, it's under your sign... It's under your sign regulation that identifies the user of the building. It's not a commercial billboard sign.
Right.
So I'd be happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
My only question is, the sign will be on the I-95 side, or it's going to be on both sides?
All four sides.
All four sides?
Yes.
So all around the building, basically?
Yeah, basically around the building. So you'll see... What's nice, it's in the middle of the... For the most part, it's set back in the middle of the building, so if I show you the picture...
I went to the site, I saw it myself, but I just want clarification, it's going to be all over on the building?
On the building.
On the building, okay.
In the center, as you can see, basically center, center of the building. So it doesn't overpower the building. As you can see, with a building that's five, maybe almost six stories high, the sign being, with the letters being two and a half feet high, that certainly does not overpower the building, but it does give an identification. And what you have also, which is interesting, is in some instances, not just... It identifies the building also because you've got to remember, you've got a bunch of one-way streets there. Railroad Avenue is one-way on either side of the tracks. It notifies you that it's coming up, and you can get right off on Fairfield Avenue. So this is really something that's essential. If you were to say, the signs couldn't be higher than 20 feet, you may as well not have any signs.
You said there's lights going to be above the signs? Lights going to be reflecting on the signs? Lights?
No, they'll be backlit.
Backlit.
Yeah, they're all backlit. There'll be no shining up, and no glare. And like I said, 1,000 feet, probably the closest to a neighborhood zone, but that's also across train tracks and across multiple commercial buildings before you get there.
And there's no apartment building that high around there?
No. No, it's all...
Any other questions?
What's that? Well, those are the four issues for that. So as you know, with regard to our site plan review standard, it doesn't have any negative impact, no effect on health, safety, and welfare of any of the residents.
No impact on Long Island Sound.
I believe it satisfies all your site plan review standards, it satisfies the four specific conditions necessary for you to agree to allow signs to go above 25 feet.
All right. Would anyone like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone opposed to this application? See no opposition in the majority?
Folks, thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is 25-29. We got to say it, we got to read it out, don't we? We just did the first one.
Yeah, he didn't announce that.
I didn't announce this. So we have 25-29, 130 Hanson Avenue, petition of Atlantic Coleman LLC seeking site plan review and coastal site plan review approvals to construct a six-unit apartment building in the NX2 zone and coastal area. And they are requesting a defer.
Pardon me, ma'am?
I'm sorry.
It was requesting to be deferred.
That's not going to be heard tonight.
It's not going to be heard tonight. It's being deferred.
Oh, it is?
Yes. Next month. No, you'll see a public notice, but no personal letter, no.
No, Hanson Avenue.
I think it's October 27, next meeting? It will be for October 27, maybe?
October 27?
Yes. We letting you know now that it's being put for that date. It's not going to be heard tonight.
There will be a public notice.
Okay. And I guess Mr. Burns will let us know?
I have no idea. But we can't keep having this conversation back and forth, so we'll call the next item, please.
Next item, 25-30, 3389 Fairfield Avenue. Petition of Brian Pietrignac seeking special permit and site plan review approvals to allow live entertainment as an accessory use to the existing brewery/tap room in the MX1 zone.
How many, ma'am?
Yeah, I was told to make 13 copies.
I'm sorry, what is...
13 copies.
Of what? We've got a package.
We got this.
Yeah, that's it. So you guys have that.
I mean, we have this.
I guess I made 13 more. Sorry, that's my first zoning board meeting.
Is this probably the same thing that we got?
That's basically why I turned it into the zoning board. It has an executive statement on there from the personnel.
Fine.
There was also cover letter.
I think so, yes. The name is removed. All right, sir, can you introduce yourself and tell us what you're here for?
Absolutely. Here's the receipts, too, for all of them. Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Brian Pietcheck. I speak on behalf of 12 Note Brew Co., a musically themed brewery located in the beautiful neighborhood of Black Rock, Virginia.
And your address?
3389 Fairfield Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm here tonight to request a special permit allowing limited live entertainment as a necessity used to our brewery and taproom. Our goal is simple, to create a safe, community-focused space where locally brewed beer and local music come together. Here's what it looks like in practice. Live performances will be small-scale, acoustic or lightly amplified, and always intended to complement the taproom atmosphere, not a rock venue or concert. All music will end by 9:00 PM, and with any outdoor performances limited to our front patio only upon zoning approval. Our facility is fully ADA accessible, with fire and health inspections completed, with the approved occupancy of 41 guests. Parking is well accommodated with 19 dedicated spaces plus on-street availability for overflow. In short, we're committed to operating responsibly and full compliance with state liquor laws and city regulations while enhancing the Fairfield Avenue corridor as a welcoming destination. We're proud to bring this vision to Bridgeport and appreciate your consideration of our requests. Do you guys have any questions?
So you're saying, basically acoustic music?
Yep.
Inside? I think there is some community opposition to... You received a couple of letters.
I received one.
I saw there was an email out.
Yeah.
And I also have a retort to that as well.
But I don't think we generally allow outside entertainment. Outdoor entertainment.
Our neighbors, Stoked and Blind Rhino, do live entertainment.
Doesn't mean it's legal.
What's that? No, they do outside. It sounds like an enforcement issue. We're primarily going to be inside. Like, we actually installed soundproof panels in there, so it would absorb the music. And also, because it's basically a garage, I don't know if you guys have ever been there, it's a small taproom. We don't want that noise bouncing around. People like... I'm 45, I don't like hearing loud music, so keep it at a minimum. It's primarily indoors, and the outdoor side of it is Blind Rhino, Stoked, and ourselves definitely want to collaborate, you know, when the weather turns nicer again next summer, because we're hoping to be open. We're waiting on the state approval for that. But we want to collaborate and, you know, bring the community together, you know, through arts and crafts, music and craft gear.
I'm sorry, so the live stand will be outside or indoors?
Indoors primarily.
Indoors.
Like 90%.
Okay.
Okay.
Paul Boucher, zoning department. The regulations do state that live entertainment is regulated through the noise ordinance of the city of Bridgeport. So I'm assuming that means that there can be some entertainment outside also.
I would just ask, you know, you to show us how you meet the special permit standards. Special permit standards.
Oh, for the MX2?
Yes.
So I was doing a little research on that. So Section 4.40.3 also discusses this topic as an MX2-zoned area, where it's up to you guys whether you approve it or not. Like I said, we want to keep it at a minimum outside. We don't want... We want to respectfully, you know, let our neighbors have a quality of life that they want and enjoy. So we're willing to work with that as well. The commission is asking for the criteria review and approval criteria for special permits. His attorney did, one by one, and one, three, four, five, six, seven. So just read this out, then. And say that it complies with... Not applicable. Okay, I'm sorry. I had the other part written. So review, in general, the proposed special permit use and accompanying site plan are consistent with and implement the objectives and policies of the master plan of conservation and development. The proposed special permit use and accompanying site plan complies with all applicable zoning code regulations. The proposed special permit use and accompanying site plan will not impair future development of the surrounding area. The proposed special permit use will not be detrimental to existing development in the surrounding area because of its height, scale, design, or method of operation. The proposal includes adequate safeguards to protect adjacent property in the neighborhood in general from any potential adverse impacts. The proposed use is not likely to cause the depreciation of value of nearby properties, and environmental impacts to the Long Island Sound will be appropriately mitigated even if it doesn't matter.
I'm sure that does not apply to you. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else on the commission have any questions?
Yes. What are the days and hours that this would be?
So the music would be primarily, even inside, would be 6 to 9. But our operating hours through the week, which is Wednesday through Friday, will be 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Saturday would be 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and then Sunday would be 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
I'm sorry, you said Sunday?
11 to 6.
Now, are you going... Are you serving food?
We will be having snacks, and also Blind Rhino is going to help facilitate a hot menu as well. He's got a scanned QR code, and it goes right to their kitchen, and they hustle it out. And then we're all looking at food trucks as well that are registered with Bridgeport.
All right. Anything else, anyone? What is your seating capacity on?
41. Yeah, it's small.
Anyone else? Do you have anything? No. All right, anyone like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone opposed to this application?
Oh, the emails?
We've got a couple. I thought it was two, I thought. I thought there were two, too.
Yeah, there might have been two. I know, I seen one.
There's one letter of opposition.
I'll just read it into the record. This is from Richard A. Hout and Teresa Rossi. To whom it may concern, this letter is concerning a request by 12 Note Brew Company located at 3389 Fairfield Avenue in Bridgeport to allow the live entertainment at their establishment. We are opposed to all outside music.
There was another letter that said exactly the same thing. I remember it, yeah.
I didn't read it.
It's exactly the same. The verbiage is identical.
I do have letters of recommendation for it. They're all in the packets.
Okay.
One's a neighbor, and the other one's Blind Rhino.
All right, sir, thank you.
There was nobody opposed?
No one opposed.
Okay.
That's fine.
We had opposed, the emails.
Right. All right, that matter is opposed.
The next item is 25-31, 490 Alba Avenue. Petition of Jose Al seeking special permit and site plan review approval to construct a two-family residential dwelling in the N2 zone.
Let the record show that Ali Akbar has left the meeting for a moment.
Does he want to proceed?
Well, we have five.
Can we do?
I think it's five, isn't it?
What does he usually go on for, five minutes?
I don't know, really.
He's recommending a ticket. Five-minute break.
All right, we'll take a five-minute break. All right, we'll, we'll take a five-minute break.
He's, he's on.
Is that good? Do you want me to blow it out or zoom in? Blow it up?
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Wilson Carroll. I'm an attorney with Cohen &amp; Wolf down on 1115 Broad Street. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Joe Alves, who's here with me in the room tonight as well. Mr. Alves has a history of high-quality development in the city. He, in particular, in this particular area on Alba Avenue, he actually constructed 470 and 480 Alba Avenue, which are the next two properties. And if, since we have this nice Google Maps aerial up, it is a little bit out of date that the property with showing the foundation is actually 480 Alba Avenue. And so that is fully complete as of today's date. Just to the left is the subject property, 490 Alba Avenue. A little bit bigger than the lots on 470 and 480. This application is for a special permit and a site plan review for the development of a two-story, two-family, side-by-side residence, which is in the N2 zone. And although single-family is allowed as of right in this zone, you have to come in for a special permit if you want to have that second unit in the structure. This proposed residence is a House B building type, which I believe is the only type that's allowed in the zone. Each unit is proposed to have its own entrance, and this property is also served by a parking lot, nine feet, sorry, parking area, parking driveway. It's the widest that's allowed under the regulations. It's nine feet. And although that's not required, that's something that Mr. Alves incorporates to, at least on Alba Street and to all of his properties. This has already gone through concept review with David Cunningham. We had a good discussion and there were no recommendations to the plans as a, additions to the plans as a result of that meeting. Proposal is fully zoning compliant, meets the special permit criteria and the regulations. I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission has and Mr. Alves will answer them as well.
You need to address the special permit standards.
Sure. So, starting with number one, the P O C D includes provisions that promote the, or encourage infill development. The development of vacant or underutilized lots, growing the residential tax base. And all those goals are served by this application. There's no accompanying traffic impact. It's a classic one for special permit review where, you know, is this going to be too dense for the area based on the traffic perspective? And that's one of the reasons why Mr. Alves includes the off-street parking in his designs. In that sense, this is going to be consistent with the neighborhood and the area. It's not going to have any detrimental impacts on property values or the appropriate and orderly development of the surrounding areas. And then subsection B of the special permit criteria applies specifically to N zones. And so, it again, sort of calls out a traffic-type impact, whether the nature and intensity of the operations will be incongruous with the existing residential uses. The size of the building and the density, at least based on acreage compared to the other properties in the area, is not, you know, out of character or disproportionate to the other residential uses. Its layout and its relation to access streets are such that pedestrian and vehicular traffic to and from the use, you know, won't interfere with other residential uses. I've already said it, but the off-street parking and the, you know, relatively low density compared to acreage in relation to the other properties in the area serve that goal as well. I mean, there's no undue hazard inconvenience to residents as a, as a result of it. I don't think there's any, any inconsistency with the special permit regulations and in particular, these type of things when we're saying, you know, we want to come in for another unit. The thing that comes to mind right away is traffic and those are, that's already addressed by the design.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Looking at the design, so there's, there's not going to be any digging for gas lines or anything. You're just going to have propane tanks. Our propane tanks are going to be the only supply of gas.
Let me just ask Mr. Alves.
There's propane tank, there's no gas lines.
No gas lines, it's all propane.
It's all rock over there, right?
There you go.
It's like a hill. I, I visited the site, so my question is the following. Is it, you said off-street parking. Is there going to be, like, each unit is going to have its own garage?
Joe, so if you look at the site plan, sort of on the bottom right of the lot, you can see there's a proposed parking stall, is what it's called. So, it's nine feet wide, but it's also quite deep, so I think, you know, each unit would have at least one spot in there, if not more. I think you could probably stack a couple more, but certainly one.
So, it's one driveway, one driveway?
Yeah, you're actually only allowed to have one driveway.
And there's no parking at the back, correct?
Correct.
Because I, like I said, I visited the site. I see all these new houses down the block. They all have their own garage. And either it's one garage or two garage, so this would be the only house on that block that will be, if, a two-family, but it will have a driveway.
For each?
For each. No, no, he said one driveway.
One driveway, is what he said.
Right.
Nine feet wide.
Right, one driveway that serves.
So, basically, they have, if one parks in the back, they, they all got to come out so that one car will come out.
Yeah, I think it's reasonable to expect there would be some level of coordination, but it's, you know, not impossible that there could be cars side by side. But just because of the layout of the lot.
Yeah. By each other.
It's narrow.
Nine, nine feet is big enough for two cars.
To pass by each other? Really? Okay.
What's a standard parking stall, isn't it nine feet?
It's an hour street. It was an hour street. I couldn't park. I went there, too.
Right, but nine, nine feet is also the maximum width that's allowed for a driveway. So, it's as wide as the regulations.
It's a maximum?
Any other questions from the? On the board? Okay. Anyone in favor of this application? Anyone opposed? Do you want to speak?
Should I read this into the record first or?
Hey, how's everybody doing today?
Good, thank you. Your name and address, please?
The reason that we oppose.
Name and.
Your name and address.
My name is Dan Carmichael. My wife Sandra Carmichael.
And your address?
And we live on 429 Woodlawn Avenue, which is the street over. The reason we oppose it is basically because isn't Woodlawn Avenue, that general area, a single-family zone? And if we allow a two-family to be built there, wouldn't it open up the avenue for other two families to be built in a single-family zone?
Well.
We have one house that is similar to a two-family.
The zone allows for two families with a special permit.
Excuse me?
The zone does allow for two families with a special permit. And that's what he's here seeking.
And so, we also, back in 2020, we had an issue with our neighbor across from us. He's been building out this house, that's a single-family house, where now he's renting out rooms. And I've been back and forth with the city regarding this house across from us and the traffic that it's causing and so on and so forth. And we were told that we're in a single-family zone.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's difficult from the zoning enforcement, um, the point of view to enforce. Because you, you, you can't really go in and count heads, you know, it's just a hard thing to enforce, but they do try.
So, would that depreciate the value of the single-family homes if you have two-family houses built?
Not necessarily. No, I mean, no, I mean, it depends.
Besides the traffic, the extra traffic?
Depends on the character of the neighborhood.
Well, the character of the neighborhood.
And that neighborhood, I would say no, not at all. There's a lot of nice new homes over there.
That's, that's what our main concern is, is it opening up the chance for other two-family homes to be built there, which would depreciate the value of our single-family.
There's not a heck of a lot, many open lots left there, over there anymore.
And they're building them behind them, on top of them, and everything else, so it can change.
Yeah, they're going home more up towards Topsie Hill and up towards where all the rock is. That's where they develop. All right, sir, thank you. Anyone else? Rebuttal?
Wait a minute, no.
I'll, 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 no, yes, I'm sorry.
Read this letter, this opposition letter in, into the record. Okay. I can't read this name.
I know, what is it?
Something J. Thompson. Fabiola?
Maybe.
505 Flat Street. Planning and Zoning Commission, City of Bridgeport, subject opposition to proposed construction at 490 Alba Avenue. Dear members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I am writing as a homeowner whose property is directly be, directly behind, okay, sorry, the opposed construction at 490 Alba Avenue to respectfully express my strong opposition to this project. My concerns are as follows. Direct impact on my property, this building would be constructed immediately behind my home, in my backyard area. Because my house is located on a hill overlooking the site, the proximity of the view structure would severely interfere with both my privacy and my family's safety. Second, disruption of quality of life. Increased traffic, noise, and congestion from a two-family residence will disturb the peace and quiet that residents currently in.
Enjoy?
Enjoy, okay. This project would dramatically change the livability of our neighborhood. Safety concern, number three. The added density raises risk for both vehicles and pedestrians. Parking overflow and increased movement in an already compact area will make the neighborhood less safe, especially for children and seniors. Neighborhood character, number four. The development is not in keeping with the current character of our community, which is composed largely of single-family homes. Approving this request would set a precedent for further dense construction that could erode the stability and comfort of the neighborhood. For these reasons, I strongly urge the Planning and Zoning Commission to deny the application for the construction at 490 Alba Avenue. The proposed project directly threatens my family's privacy, safety, and quality of life, as well as that of surrounding neighbors. Thank you for your time and for considering the serious impact this project would have on nearby residents. Respectfully, Fabiola and J. Thompson.
Thank you. Again, for the record, Attorney Wilson Carroll, just very briefly, in response, just to highlight a couple of things that, as I believe the chairman mentioned, special permit uses are allowed uses in that zone, subject to the special permit requirement. Which gives your commission a little bit of extra leeway to take a look at the special permit criteria and to consider site-specific evidence about what might, what the impacts of the proposal might be. And I say site-specific because in 2021, there was a special permit appeal in Bethel called McLaughlin versus the Bethel Plating and Zoning Commission. And in that case, the proposed special permit was for a crematory, which is in a, in a pretty busy business park. And the crematory is like, you know, one of the classic boogeymen of zoning. And so, one of the arguments that a lot of the vocal opposition made was that this is going to be a public health and safety issue. This is going to cause diminution in our property values. And, you know, a lot of, in the same general nature of the concerns that were expressed by the, in the letter that you just read and by the neighbors to the proposed development. And what the Supreme Court held in that case is that generalized concerns about those things, about diminution in property value or traffic or public health and safety, are not sufficient to deny a special permit application. There has to be site-specific evidence showing that the proposal is going to have that effect. And so, for example, if there was a traffic concern, then an opposition member would have to have a traffic study that shows that the, that, you know, two units instead of one is going to create traffic that would have a deleterious effect on public safety. Or diminution in value, you have to have an appraiser or at least a realtor who did some sort of actual analysis on this site to say that that's going to have that. With all due respect, there's no such evidence here tonight. I think this is a relatively modest proposal, like I said, on a lot that's larger than the other ones next to it and that has already taken steps that are not required under the regulations, such as providing off-street parking to sort of get ahead of any of those traffic-related concerns and to provide, you know, the people who actually would live in this unit with some ability to not add to the existing parking issue on the street.
Is it going to be, it's a two-family, I understand that. Is it going to be both rentals? Or is one half going to be owned and the other one?
Both rentals.
It's rentals, okay, thank you.
I mean, I have nothing further on this there.
All right, thank you. This matter is closed, thank you.
We now have 25-32. Does David, do you have anything? Okay. 25-32, 20 Waller Road. Petition of Adelio Pimenta, Pimenta, seeking a special permit site plan review and subdivision approval for three lots in the N4 zone.
So, folks, Raymond Rizzi, for the record, representing Adelio Pimenta with regard to this property on Waller Road. This is an oversized lot, has an existing home. We'd like to add two other homes. Typically, when we, before you first subdivision, there's no special permit requirement. All you have to do is show that it complies with all the regulations. Then there's instances where it doesn't, there might be some factor which would cause it not to comply, that the commission has the right to alter lot area setbacks, things like that. For that purpose, you would need a special permit. This is a really unique site. Basically, we're in a N4 zone. You need to have 7,500 square feet. No problem with 7,500 square feet, Lot A. Existing lot, 7,500 square feet. Lot C is 74, 100, 74. Lot C is 74, 100, 74, 7,413 square feet. So it's 87 square feet short, which is less, which is a little more than 1% of the lot area. Basically, probably around about the area that we're looking at in here.
So what are the, what are the other two lot sizes?
There's 75, 53, and 7502. But there's, in explaining why we would like to seek the modification, it's important. So what's happened is, over the years, the city of Bridgeport has basically taken this corner of about, which is more, which is about 900 square feet of the roadway now goes through the front. So one of the reasons you can modify is if it's to preserve some public spaces. So rather than get into a fight with the city of Bridgeport, get them to move this road, in question of whether it's, how long it's been there, this 900 feet basically clips our corner and makes a lot of floor. Rather than get into a fight to push the roadway back, you understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying, but has the lot been surveyed, is that?
The lot's been ser-, oh, that's a survey of the lot, yeah.
So?
So we look here-
So the city's encroaching on your property?
The city is, yeah, and it has been for probably as long as I can remember, which is unfortunately pretty long. So it's been over 50 years. And so they, what happened is the city probably, if our client contested, could just condemn this corner. Typically, what had happened over the years, when you had a subdivision, you had a squared-off corner. Since this Waller Road is a, you know, a 100-year-old subdivision, it kind of, the road just kept moving for safety purposes. And since this was the only house on the lot, I don't think anybody ever paid attention to it. As you can see, there's the stone wall here. You can see there's probably about 35 feet should be from the stone wall to the road. If you look at this picture, the stone wall's almost on the road. So should the road have taken its natural course, this would be a good one, this would be an end of the good form. We would like to get your permission by way of a special permit. I'll take you through the special permit standards. It shows that you would have the right to modify this to let it down to seven, one lot going down to 7,400, 400, 7,413 square feet. It is 100% compliant every other reason. Frontage, setbacks. In fact, to show you that we're not overbuilding, your title is 60%, 65% coverage. There's only 40% coverage with regard to the houses. The intention is to build two very attractive single-family homes on either side of the existing. Just to give you, just to give you a look, so that you can see. So, there, existing, you know, two-car garage, just really nice single-family homes on either side. So this is what you can see on either side of the single-family. Very attractive. Now, if you look at your special permit standards, your special permit standards are pretty straightforward. And I think in this instance, it's pretty easy to satisfy. So, you're spe-, what happens is, because we're asking for this modification, it kicks in special permit standards. If we're just here for a straight subdivision, we'd say, you guys would look at it and say, yeah, they check all the boxes, boom, we don't even consider whether we like it or not. But this says, "The proposed special permit use and accompanying site plan are consistent with, implement the objectives of the master plan." That's to conserve and develop some public space, which is meaning, don't make this road go, portion of the road go away. Secondly, under the master plan, we all know about the need for new single-family homes in City of Bridgeport. "Pro special permit use and accompanying site plan complies with all applicable regu-, zoning regulations." It does in every way except for which this small modification that we're requesting. "The proposed special permit does not, and accompanying site plan will not impair future development in the surrounding areas." They're all single-family homes, single-family lots, there's no change in use. If anything, these two new homes, I would help, will help appreciate the properties. "Pro special permit will not be detrimental to existing development in the surrounding areas because of its height, scale, design, or method of operation. Single-family home complying with height, setbacks, everything else." "The proposal includes adequate safe cars for the adjacent property and neighborhood in general from any potential adverse impacts." Building a single-family home in a single-family neighborhood on a lot which will be, I would say, imperceptible to the eye that it's 7,413 square feet versus 7,500 square feet. I don't think it'll have any impact at all. "The pro's use will not likely cause depreciation in value of nearby properties." I think if anything it'll do, it'll help enhance the value of neighboring properties. One thing, we don't have to worry, though, I can say without even bringing experts, this will have no environmental impacts on Long Island Sound. So, other than that, I think we satisfy all the special permit standards. More importantly, I think in this instance, relief from this lot area of an imperceptible amount, I think, would be warranted.
I don't think you even need it. Because that, you own that portion that the city kept. I mean, took. So if you, if you had it surveyed, that would show what your land-
Well, we talked, we talked about it, and rather than go, we thought it was more, better to go here. I mean, you could basically say that it's under dispute. The city has owned it, operated it, and maintained it. We don't want to be in a situation down the road where we're building and then have a condemnation.
Well, what happens down the road when you, when the person buys a property?
What'll happen is, if we, if we bring, object to this to the city, because it won't be able to make a turn on Waller Road the right way, the city will just condemn away that piece and will have a lot that's now 1,000 square feet, sure. So, in our instance, we'd rather keep the size of the lot, record the subdivision, and leave everything as it is.
But according to the land records of that lot-
It's, oh.
But what, once the prop-, once the property is developed- Once the property's developed, what would be the survey of the property, the same, same size as it is now?
He developed it, then it's the way it is in the east.
So in other words, they'll, the city will keep the-
Everything will stay the same.
I'm just a question, I went in there and I took a look at the area, it's a nice area, though. And with that little radius you're talking about there, and then you said that the city has control of that over 50 years. Now, I am not an attorney, right? So I know the city is not going to give you back the land because to add this possession. Once it's 12 years, you own it. So the city's not going to give you back the land as one.
No, the city has the right to take the, the city would have the right to take and condemn the land if we didn't want to leave it the way it was.
I don't see, I don't see they're going to turn that little area there into a rectangular shape or a square shape. I, I, to me, it's not feasible, you know? One, and then the area, it's not too far from Sacred Heart University.
Correct.
So in the future, maybe the developers could have different ideas and perhaps even put apartment buildings there, so that the students could rent.
Having been before this commission for the last 20 years, if, I think if I suggest an apartment building, we would probably be here till 11 o'clock, and I think this, and I think this room would, this room would be packed.
I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking.
So I don't, I, I think we're pretty comfortable just keeping the single-family residences consistent with the single-family residences in the neighborhood.
And, and, and the houses, it's like 52 feet. 52 feet wide, as you're suggesting, a 52 feet.
So it's compliance?
No, I get it, I get it, I just, you know?
That's it, I, I would, I would respectfully, I respect the request this commission make this miniscule modification to your standards, given the unique circumstances of the situation. And I appreciate your time.
Would anyone like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone opposed to this application? See no opposition, members opposed, thank you.
So that's the end of the public here.
And it's the end of the public here.
Yeah, not a family.
Oh, well, it's-
It's insane. I wonder, it's a nice place, there's a lot of new houses. So now you want to change the whole character? And it's one on top of the other.
Yeah.
It's not side by side. It doesn't look like side by side.
What's the city attorney's name?
Ray, would you join us?
You are? It doesn't?
All right, well, here we go, it's rock and roll. Madison Avenue, we have to vote to defer. C1?
Motion to defer.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Deferred until October.
That's the last one?
That's the last one.
Okay.
But there were, you know, I think-
They understand.
Yeah.
Three strikes.
All right, the next item is 2528, 1525 Railroad Avenue.
I make a motion to approve it with-
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to defer Hanson Avenue.
I make a motion to defer.
I second.
Bob made the motion.
I know, no, no.
Yeah, all in favor?
All right.
All right, 25-30, 3389 Fairfield Avenue, seeking special permit and site plan review for live entertainment as an accessory used to an existing brewery taproom in an MX1 zone.
I think, since it's indoor, mostly.
Well-
90%.
90% is indoor.
That's the part.
10% probably is on a good day.
If you trust him.
And the decibel level, well, he has to, he has to go, he has to go along with that anyway, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's the law. I think we're better off saying you can't have outside. It's got to say inside.
He could have inside, but not outside?
But there's, but there's outside, there's outside in that area, is that correct?
Yes.
So if we go to court with that, so what, what's going to happen?
Oh, we got the attorney.
There's, there's, that's what I'm saying, I mean, there's already outside.
Yeah, but it's more like, the building's setback.
So the question is to you whether, since there are other venues, not with that, you have my heart, outdoor music, whether if they said no outdoor music to this particular place, whether that might be a a possible condition for-
Challenging.
Well, it's always possible, certainly, if you're treating one applicant different than others, but if there's outdoor music allowed in other locations, is that because, you know, these require non-imporned uses?
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember approving outdoor. I don't think we explicitly ever approved outdoor entertainment on any of those.
We did.
We did?
The old, the old Red Rooster? The old Red Rooster where-
That's not Fairfield Avenue.
No, no, but that's on North Avenue.
I know, that's what I'm thinking of, too, because then it got so out of hand.
It got out of hand. We did approve it.
Well, no, but I mean, on Fairfield Avenue. We, I don't think, I don't remember- Ah, okay.
But just certainly within your rights to say no, and that they want to feel-
Yeah, I thought, you know, I, well, that was probably the old regulations, that they had to apply for any time they wanted it.
It's, it's a small place, I wondered this afternoon. Yeah, that's about it.
Yeah, I know.
That's what I didn't quite understand about-
You're going to have a two-piece?
One, one band and a doubler.
A one-band band?
With the doubler, the doubler's got to take the-
Non, well, what we could do is say, "Non-amplified music outside."
So what are you recommending? So what would you, what do you want, what kind of a condition, if any, do you want to put on it?
Yeah, conditions, well, I think my, Mal's had a, he said, "No amplified music outside," I don't know, because most music is amplified.
Well, that's not what he's, but that's not what he was selling. He said, you know, acoustic and, or, yeah.
Inside.
Yeah, yeah, well, so, outside, you do, you certainly don't want, if he's willing to settle for that inside, he certainly should settle for it outside. You don't want to, you know?
So what are we going to do?
That's what you were doing.
No, no. Do I have a motion?
Well, I move to approve a condition.
Thank you, Bob. Move us off the dime. Do I have a second?
No, he's only second.
All right, now what are the, what conditions are we looking for?
The one we s-
That's the only, what do we want to do about outside?
Wait a minute, so we got acoustic only?
Inside? No.
We're talking about outside, this is what we're talking about.
Well, I, I guess what I want to get straight. Well, or, no, he did say, "Or lightly amplified."
Wait a minute, it just said, "Special permit and site plan approves to allow live entertainment as an accessory used to the existing brewery taproom." It doesn't say inside or outside.
Right.
But when he was in the stand, he was saying outside. To 90% inside to 1% outside.
And you got a total of like 41 people sitting. So, I mean, it's- Yeah, I see, well, yeah, it's, I mean, it's outside.
Okay, okay. Fine.
Okay, all right.
Fine.
That's what I thought, anyway.
It sounds good.
I mean, it's the same as the hours that he mentioned, that they will be operating, so.
They're not bad either.
They're not bad. Okay, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, where are we? Okay, 2531 Alba Avenue, seeking special site plan, a special permit and site plan review to construct a two-family dwelling in an R, in an N2 zone.
I make a motion to approve.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No?
I didn't hear nobody, everybody didn't vote, no.
I didn't, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, they said, I know he said that, but I didn't-
All in favor by a show of hands? Oh, Ali's got his hand, okay.
Oh, okay.
He's looking at you, I was looking, I was like, I'm moving, I'm moving.
Okay, a cap. I know. Around 12. Right. Right, it meets the, right. Consistent with the master plan of development. The boilerplatey. 25-32, 20 Waller Road, seeking a special permit site plan review for the subdivision of just heard.
Make a motion to- Oh, there you go. Oh, there you go.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
You too.
What you call, had, texted me, she got a flat tire on Joanne.
She just text you?
She texted, she might have texted a bunch of them.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor? Meeting adjourned.
So we only keep the twenty-one twenty-nine for next meeting?
Yep.